Good afternoon. Want to get started? This committee of the whole, for the purpose of hearing, taking testimony on Bill Number 180108 and Resolution Number 180124. Mr. Christmas, please read the title of the bill and resolution.
Bill 180108, an ordinance authorizing the City of Philadelphia to enter into lease agreements with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development, under which the city would lease to pay on a project-by-project basis certain land of facilities in the Fairmount Park System, recreation centers, playgrounds, and branches in the Free Library of Philadelphia system, and which would permit pay to sublease such facilities on a project-by-project basis to other organizations in conformity with the Economic Development Financing Law as amended, all under certain terms and conditions. And Resolution 180124, approving the rebuild project statement, including annual budgets for project expenditures for fiscal years 2018 and 2019, a list of city properties to be included in the program and a master economic opportunity plan.
Thank you very much. Before we start, I'd just like to thank everyone who's come down today in clement weather. We appreciate you being here. Given the significance of this program, we hope that your input will be realized in terms of us making sure that we get these facilities done across the city and making sure that it is not only inclusive in terms of neighborhoods that share, as a result of us making money available through a very, very difficult vote, I must say, and also making sure that it's inclusive in terms of the people that actually not only get jobs but get contracts as a result of this opportunity in our city. So I want to thank you all. First up, we'll call our administration witnesses, Nicole Westerman and David Ghul.
Good afternoon, Council President Clark.
If you want to sit up there, you can. You good? It's not hot up there. I know they call it the hot seat, but it's not really hot.
I'm Nicole Westerman, Executive Director for Rebuilding Community Infrastructure or Rebuild. I'm joined today by the rebuild team and other members of the Kenny Administration to present testimony in support of Bill Number 180108 and Resolution Number 180124. Resolution Number 180124 approves the rebuild project statement, which proposes a first list of 61 rebuilt sites, presents a first budget, and sets forth a master economic opportunity plan. Bill Number 180108 will allow sites to be leased per construction if desired. After years of underinvestment and deferred maintenance, Philadelphia's parks, recreation centers, and libraries are in desperate need of resources. From leaky roofs to no air conditioning or heat, Philadelphians are relying on facilities well below acceptable standards. In total, only 10% of facilities across both systems are in excellent condition. Every other site needs improvement, ranging from small in scale to complete overhauls. As you know, this challenge is the impetus for rebuild, a plan to invest hundreds of millions of dollars into neighborhoods through improvements to parks, recreation centers, and libraries. Through this process, we're also investing in residents through our efforts to improve opportunities for minorities and women to enter successful careers in the building trades, supporting the participation and growth of small minority and women-owned businesses, and empowering residents to both inform how their community facility is improved and continue to play a supportive role at the facility after rebuild is over. We know this vision of investing responsibly and equitably is one that is shared by city council. However, this shared vision also has shared challenges, given that we have far more facilities in need than rebuild's budget will be able to address. The legislation being considered today reflects difficult decisions both the administration and council have made about which facilities we will invest in first. Since last spring, when council passed the rebuild financing ordinance, we've been consulting and meeting regularly with district council members to develop recommendations for a budget and the first list of sites, which was presented to council in the form of a draft project statement last September and submitted as a formal proposal in November. The list of 61 sites is the result of numerous conversations with each district council member, each of whom had confirmed with rebuild that the list reflects priorities in their district. These sites also represent a diverse set of neighborhoods and types of facilities, and consistent with our planning process, concentrates our investment in high-need neighborhoods, those with relatively high rates of poverty, drug crimes, or health risks. This list also focuses on facilities that are in dire need of improvements. When council approves this project statement and lease ordinance, we are ready to launch projects with city capital funds. We can begin engaging with community members to hear more about their facilities' needs and what programs they envision for their communities. We can begin designing improvements that will provide the functionality and the beauty that residents deserve. For projects that are already designed, we can go directly to groundbreakings. Since last spring, our team has been laying the groundwork to start projects after this project statement is approved. For our diversity program, we partnered with district council members, the Commerce Department, and the Office of Economic Opportunity to conduct outreach to interested businesses, especially minority and women-owned businesses, to let them know how rebuild will work, prepare them for contracting opportunities, and connect them to resources to gain access to capital or become certified. We've also been serving certified and non-certified firms to better understand the challenges they're facing, and we're working closely with OEO to develop a pilot program to incentivize more firms to become certified through rebuild. Finally, we've continued planning and development of PHL Pipeline, our workforce development program, which will launch after bonds have been issued for rebuild. Last fall, we carried out an RFQ process to qualify the first set of project users, the nonprofit organizations that are expected to manage most rebuild projects. The process yielded a cohort of 21 diverse organizations that met the qualifications established in rebuild's financing ordinance and are eligible to compete for grants to manage rebuild projects. Finally, we've continued to update community members and advocates on what to expect with rebuild and how the program's been progressing. With the funding we have available through the city's capital budget and a startup grant from the William Penn Foundation, we're prepared to begin an initial set of projects following the passage of this legislation. The capital dollars will be used for design and construction. The grant funds are the only source of funding for our diversity and engagement efforts. They will allow us to help friends groups and recreation advisory councils build their ability to attract members, raise funds, and improve programming. They will allow us to work with M and WBEs to make sure they have the insurance, bonding, and access to capital they need to compete successfully for rebuild contracts. And they will allow us to do the recruiting, training, and ongoing support to help PHL Pipeline participants prepare for and pass apprentice exams. Without grant funds, we're unable to fund any of this important programming. The passage of this legislative package will allow us to start working with project users to launch an initial set of rebuild projects. Once the Philadelphia beverage tax is upheld and rebuild bonds are issued, this legislation will also enable us to scale up and deliver projects across Philadelphia using bond proceeds. Thank you for your time. My team and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your testimony. Couple of quick questions, little clarity. When you talk about the total amount of projected funding from all sources, what is that number?
The total for the entire...
The first phase of this project?
For the first...
Yes.
So in the FY '18 capital budget, there's $8 million, and we have a $4.8 million startup grant from the William Penn Foundation. And then as soon as, in January of next year, another $8 million of capital dollars will be available, and as soon as the beverage tax litigation is successfully resolved, we'll issue bonds.
And the total will be how much?
So the total of those amounts would be 16 plus, so 20.8 plus, we're projecting $100 million bond issuance.
$100 million bond issuance. So I think the numbers come up to like 147 total. So are we going to make available, are we going to appropriate, make appropriation for the entire 147?
So we took the language of the ordinance passed in June literally and projected, and so the budget that you have in this document is our projected spending through June of 2019. So we made assumptions about when bond proceeds would be available, and then added those amounts to the projected grant availability and capital proceeds, and that's the amount that you have in this project statement.
Let me understand that. So we won't have this money available, the bulk of it, i.e. the borrowing, until after the litigation is resolved?
Correct.
That's 100 million. And you're projecting that the timeframe from the availability of the 100, what, 147, until what time? You will only be able to spend 66 million?
So we, as of November, when we submitted the project statement, we projected that we would spend $66 million between, we were hoping that the project statement would be passed before the holidays.
This one here?
So $66 million of spending from January 2018 through June of 2019.
June 29th of what year?
We projected $66 million of spending from January 2018 to June of 2019.
2019. And is that the, and you don't, why is that 66 million the only, I mean, why do you project that? Is that based on all of the project users being utilized, or is that based on, what is that number based on? When you say the spend rate, because we have, I think we have like 23 qualified project users?
21.
21?
21 project users, right.
And we may do some through the traditional process, utilizing the city's traditional capital process.
So...
Why can't we only do 66 million?
So we made assumptions about when the project statement would be approved, when we would be able to move forward with projects. We made assumptions about how much those projects would cost, and we made assumptions about when the bond proceeds would be available. And so based on all of those things, we projected 66 million dollars worth of spending. It's certainly possible to spend more and spend faster.
Oh.
If, you know, any project management person...
Let me ask you this, in terms of your projection of the 66 million dollars, because when I look at the list in the 5th District, I'll talk about my district, so the number one priority, I think, that we actually agree on is Cease will be more, and the $7 million for that alone. So what is that 66 based on? How many projects can you do with 66?
So...
I mean, I'm just trying to get a sense of why we're not, bottom line is, why aren't we just appropriating through the entire 147? Or at least the 100, based on?
We have no problem appropriating 147 million dollars. Again, we made a series of assumptions to project how much we expected to spend, but we're happy to talk about those assumptions and revise them.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know.
We would love to move faster.
Yeah, you know, the purpose of us getting a number of project users and people anticipating, I know, I know my colleagues and lord knows the people out in the communities want to see activity as quickly as possible. So that's something that we can have a conversation about.
We certainly agree that we want to move faster. We also just want to make sure that we are involving diverse businesses. We want, we've heard many times from diverse businesses that they need time to find out about contract opportunities.
Well, we've done that when we identify the project users. I think it's a very diverse crew of project users, based on council members' involvement. So, okay, that sounds like something we can do, maybe even today. Wanted to ask a question about, um, the list. And that's a big issue, you know, the list, because the list far exceed, when you look at the dollar amount, far exceed the available dollars. Because like you said, I got 1.7 million, that's going to eat up, whatever, the first one, then you go down the list. So how will you sequence the projects in those particular council districts?
We need to hear from council members about how to sequence, so we've started having conversations with council members about which projects would go first. We think that decision should be based on the urgency of the physical need. So we're agnostic as to which of the 61 projects move first, and need to hear from council members on that.
Okay, so the council members, when you're agnostic, so, because you started out that statement by saying you're going to work with council members, and I think we need to get a little more clarity on that. Like mine is Cease will be more, I think you know that, you guys agree, and things falling apart. In other districts, if the council member and the team sit down and say, this is the one that we agree, and then there's a disagreement on whether or not that should be first, or another one should be first, what happens?
If they're...
What's the tiebreaker? If you all might decide that it should be based on a number of things, I know you put need, you talked about growth of a community, all of those things, is it purely based on condition of the site, or the language that was in the earlier versions that talk about neighborhoods that were growing? And bottom line, a lot of new people are moving into those communities. If there was some disagreement between the council person and the rebuild team on which one should go first, what's the tiebreaker?
We don't anticipate any disagreement, because we've already agreed on all of these sites with council members, so it's just a matter of the council member saying which of their sites they want to go for.
So you think that the council members are comfortable with the sequencing or the ability to come to an agreement? You feel comfortable?
I can't speak for council members.
Huh? I'm sorry?
I can't speak for the council members, but we're, we'll be comfortable moving forward with the projects the council members want to move forward on.
Okay.
Because we're happy with all the projects on the list.
Okay, all right. Okay, I've only been speaking for eight minutes. Councilwoman Parker, actually, I know you want to get into a couple of issues, so I'm going to defer, because I was going to ask similar questions, but I know you referenced this particular issue quite significantly, so I'll defer to you at this point.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the latitude. Good afternoon to you, and I want to, with a laser-like focus, move in the direction of diversity and inclusion relative to employment. Long before the bill was passed, you'll remember, we introduced, I along with my colleagues on December the 1st, a resolution that literally outlined a pathway for workforce development and training with a laser-like focus on using rebuild as a tool to assist in diversifying the building trades and/or enhancing the number of Philadelphia residents who get access to an opportunity. After that, Councilwoman Blackwell gave us a public-private sector model via the PMS program in her area, and it's with that in mind that I want you to respond to me about what we would consider to be the fast-track program that, it was my understanding, we were supporting with the Redevelopment Authority to get, you know, sort of, almost, if not immediate, but a clear path for those who are not members of the building trades, but after taking a skills test, they could become employees at the Redevelopment Authority and be on a path similar to what was described with the PHA program, to union membership. And I'm unclear about what the specifics are about those, because that was one of the major factors that encouraged residents of the 9th District to be supportive of this effort. So can you tell me what does that look like, and how many jobs are we talking about, and what will the recruitment process be so that those people can get access to those opportunities?
Thank you for the important question. I'm actually going to ask Sheila Ireland to come up. Sheila was our deputy for diversity inclusion, working very hard on exactly these questions, and she is now the executive director of the city's Office of Workforce Development.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So for the talent development pipeline, that's what we're calling it, with the Redevelopment Authority, we've been in negotiation with a number of people to put this particular program in place. So I'll start from the beginning. So recruitment for that particular program will be citywide. In conjunction with Philadelphia Works, we'll use them as an access point for anyone who wants to be engaged in the process of applying to be in the program. In addition, because Philadelphia Works does not have the ability to do online applications, we'll accept them, paper applications at rebuild as well. And generally, the strategy I like to employ is to advertise broadly and also to hold information sessions across the city, so people have the opportunity to understand and come in and answer questions specifically about the types of jobs we're trying to put in place in the program that we're going to have. Selection as well talks about giving an opportunity for people who have had experience in the trades to really bring that experience that they've had and have it recognized within the application process as well. So what we envision doing is, is that the assessment of applications for people who come through the program will be in conjunction with subject matter experts, not just HR folks, or not just training folks who have a particular perspective. The other piece to it as well is an assessment that doesn't really rely on the things we traditionally use, like the TAE test, right? So, and workforce development, you hear about the TAE test a lot, that talks about where people have finished academically. I prefer Workkeys, because I think Workkeys talks specifically about whether or not you have the skill set, both technically and in some ways a soft skill set, that says you're prepared to enter into the skilled trades. And so that gives people an opportunity who may not do so well on the standard kind of academic test, the opportunity to move into the skilled trades and demonstrate that they have the skills and are ready to be part of it. And so in partnership with Community College of Philadelphia, we'll use their assessment centers to be able to do that. And then that kind of assessment still will be dictated by the typical needs of union apprenticeship programs, because in some ways, they are our clients if we are trying to prepare people for union membership.
So I just want to quickly interject here, because I'm mindful the president deferred time to me.
Yes.
So, you know, I want to be mindful about my time. I just want you to be able to, can you quantify for me the amount of time? For example, when I think about the PHA program?
Yes.
It was, I don't know if it was one year or two years, you had access to an opportunity to become a member of a building trades union. When members who are coming through this talent development pipeline?
Yes.
How long will they be in the program before they actually can become members, formally and officially card-carrying members of a building trades union?
So the strategy is a little bit different for this particular piece, because we're doing assessment upfront, including Workkeys and then the Union Challenge Test, they immediately become employees of the Redevelopment Authority.
So Redevelopment Authority employees first, now that's immediate, good, okay.
Right, exactly. And then there's a negotiation going on about the amount of time before they are actually awarded a union card.
Okay, so I just want to, my grandmother would say, put a pin right there.
Yes.
I want to just state for the record that I along with, I know many of my colleagues have been unapologetically supportive of the idea of diversifying the building trades and allowing Philadelphia residents who come from all sections of our city access to that opportunity.
Absolutely.
And part of the reason why that's extremely important to me versus another argument that I heard some advocating for, that in order to sort of get more people of color, African-Americans working in the trades, we should just, you know, use non-union, you know, firms and we could get more hire. And the reason why that didn't sit well with me, because I have seen no data and/or research that justifies that non-union firms offer retirement security, they offer healthcare, that they're actually paying the prevailing wage, and putting residents in a position that allows them to afford homes and pay mortgages in middle neighborhoods, like the 9th Councilmatic District. With that being said, I would ask that you keep this council not just updated, but when will we have an answer or some results about that length of time? Because although we know from a pre-apprenticeship supported that also, neighborhood-based, we need that training, this was a pathway to those who are already skilled, and we need to know those answers.
Yeah, yeah, and I agree with you 100% on all the points that you made ahead of time. And I think also the other thing that we want to make sure that we consider is, is that, you know, rebuild is a specific length of time, right? And projects are across the city, and the nature of skilled trades employment is that we are using this as a vehicle to connect the types of work they can do together so that we can get that experience piece for them. So I think you're absolutely right, there's some negotiation, and I think the MOU and the opportunity to do this work at rebuild gives us leverage that we've never had before to actually make that happen. So I'm optimistic that we will be able to do that. I can tell you, and it might be a difficult thing to understand, given our history with the trades unions in Philadelphia, but I have garnered a lot of cooperation, most of the things...
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the president.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, can I, I just ask for the record that the response to that question be provided to you. I don't know if that will be before we leave here today, but that is extremely important relative to my support for this effort, and so I just want to note that for the record, and I also want to leave you with the opportunity to respond to a question from my colleague, Councilwoman Bladell Reynolds Brown, who was here at 1:00 PM in her seat and waited, but unfortunately, some other matters delayed us from getting engaged. And so with that in mind, on the 1 to the 4th paragraph of your testimony, you talk about invested in residents through our efforts to improve opportunities for minorities and women and enter into, you know, careers in the building trades. And so one of the questions Councilwoman Reynolds Brown noted was some cited two examples. She wanted to talk about how. And then on page 2, in the 4th paragraph, she wanted details, details about M WBEs, contracting opportunities, do we have any numbers about those who are actually in the pipeline, ready to do business, architecture, design, accountants, every firm, who would have opportunities? Do we know, do we have a list of those, or how many?
Yeah. So on the business engagement side of minority women and disabled businesses, we've had the opportunity over the time, at least in my tenure with rebuild, to connect with over 1,100 minority women and disabled firms who are interested in doing work specifically on rebuild contracts.
1,100, and again, if she was here, she would say, wait, the details.
Right.
Out of the 1,100, if it's as all possible, please provide to the chair for distribution to all members what industries those 1,100 are in, because that's extremely helpful.
Okay.
Because usually we hear that there's a void, there are very few in a particular, and if we know where those 1,100 come from, that would be helpful.
Well, there are still, yeah, there are, but there are still voids, like there are voids in the places you would automatically think there would be. Steel fabrication would be one, it's highly intensive and, you know, capital-y intensive, so it's difficult for minority firms. We know, for another example, playground equipment is another one, where there's a dearth of minority firms in it. But across things like architectural and design, and construction, and deconstruction specifically, demolition, we have enough.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I'll yield now, and I thank you so very much for the leadway you just provided. I'll see you in the second round.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Real quick, just follow up on a question about the Redevelopment Authority?
Yes.
Because during the discussion in the crafting of the legislative...
I would just make a clarification on that, if I may?
The Redevelopment Authority?
Mm-hmm, yes. So just to make a clarification on what an individual could expect upon being hired by the Redevelopment Authority through rebuild? They would have a temporary card upon being hired, so they would have union benefits, Councilwoman, as soon as they were hired by the Redevelopment Authority. Yes, temporary. And then what we are working on, which Sheila was referring to, is through what period of time would they need to be employed to have a permanent card, regardless of their employment status with the Redevelopment? employment status with the Redevelopment Authority? For the PHA program that you referenced, that was three years, and we don't anticipate it being any longer than that, but we're in negotiations right now about exactly what time period that would be. So that's the piece that we are still trying to figure out.
And there's usually a certain number of hours you're saying that you're on that job before you get access to full, full card carrying member of the trade.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, and just want to follow, you must have been, you've got some stuff going on, and you knew it was on, well, it's great to ask. With respect to that, my question is, one, I don't think the Redevelopment Authority Director is here.
I don't believe so.
It would be helpful if he was here, so if somebody can reach out, see if he can come over before we conclude, because there was a meeting with him last week with some of my team, and that's not consistent with what was said.
Okay.
Basically said that he can't even hire the person unless the person was already in the union.
Okay. That's not our understanding, so we'll work on getting somebody over here to corroborate.
Yeah, I mean, I need to, you know, because the original conversation, they got hired with the Redevelopment Authority, they went in the union. Then maybe three weeks ago, we heard it was going to be some sort of temporary status. Then the person who would actually be responsible for doing the hiring says that he can't hire anybody unless they're already in the union. So that's three different responses, so that's real important.
Mm-hmm, agreed.
So I really need to get some clarity before we get out of here today.
Okay.
And I want to question, just for the record, I'm going to follow up on it, and that is the intention, as you had stated, right, that it would be guaranteed union membership, right, at the PRA, you know, however, that happens through a pre-qualification or pre-apprenticeship program? Or those, and my question on the members that'll be working through the PRA on rebuild, those who have had 20 years' experience, I think Councilwoman Parker has been a big proponent of those who have had experience in a particular craft or field would also have that opportunity, would not have to go through, you know, a length of time, that would be automatically given a union membership card if they've had X amount of experience now. However, you know, technically that is worked out, but that was the place and the opportunity for those who unfortunately missed the opportunity, were not able to be granted union membership in a particular field in the past, will have that opportunity now, is whether in Philly Works, in career length, however that process is set up. But those who have had experience will have immediate membership opportunities. Is that correct?
That's not my understanding.
Well, we should be working. It is something that we need to clear up, in my opinion.
I mean, I've been hearing different iterations of the path to union membership, like all along this process, and we thought we had come to a conclusion, but now this most recent issue with respect to whether or not they could be hired at RDA, and that's just a small part.
Right. And just to clarify, so for those individuals who do have experience but are not a member of the trades right now, that was what the Redevelopment Authority pathway was created for?
Correct, and that's what we're talking about.
Right, exactly. So for the Redevelopment Authority, that is correct. For the PHL Pipeline Program, that is a pre-apprenticeship program. So there are two pathways, Councilwoman.
Two pathways. I just want to make that clear, all right, that we are addressing both, and they both will be given, however...
Both are pathways to union membership.
Both are pathways, but you definitely want to have the PRA here to clarify what the Council President is saying, because if we're getting mixed messages, I don't want to leave here with mixed messages, all right? There are two pathways to union membership. One is for those who had the 20 years in their field, all right, will be, you know, there's a pathway, and two, another opportunity for somebody to go through whatever process you have set up through career length as, over at the PRA, but guaranteed union membership. That's what I want to hear today. I want to hear, all right, two pathways, guaranteed membership, working on rebuild, putting Philadelphians to work.
Yeah.
The, thank you. So we'll wait for the...
Redevelopment Authority.
...step, because you all need to get on the same page. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be somewhat brief for this question. Ms. Ireland, I know you're in a new capacity. However, what's the timeline for bringing in a new Director of Diversity Inclusion for Rebuild?
We have posted the position, and we've gotten hundreds of applications, and we're in the process of developing interviewing for them to come in. So I'm hoping, this is the middle of March, I'm hoping by the end of April, we'll have a new director.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I, like my colleagues, am really looking forward to getting the answers before we leave today on the diversity and the opportunities to work on rebuild. And, you know, I think, listen, if we have an opportunity to get folks into union membership, I think that's a great thing. But my question is, what happens if you don't have that opportunity? You know, it might work for some people, and it might not work for others. You know, Bobby could easily be a member, I might not have that opportunity. And so what do we do about people like myself who would not have the same opportunities to be able to participate? So I'm just really looking forward to you all being able to clarify exactly what we're doing here, because it's really just a bit murky. I just had a few questions that I wanted to get the answers to, and some of them you might have now, some of them if you could get back to us later. And the first question I had was, Nicole, about one of the questions, one of the statements you made in the beginning about some of, about 10% of our sites are in excellent condition here in the city of Philadelphia. I'd like to know if you have a list of what those sites are and where they're located? Because as we talk about where resources will be allocated, are they all downtown? Are some of them uptown? Like where are they located and what exactly are we talking about when we say some of these sites are in excellent condition? I don't know if you want to respond now or give us something in writing. I think something in writing would be good as well.
We'll definitely provide something in writing, Councilwoman. I will definitely tell you that there are sites in excellent condition all over the city, including Center City, but also Sturgis, for example. And I'll also tell you that the 10% has changed over time. So from the time we had that initial assessment, work is always going on in the system, as you know, but we will work with Parks and Rec to give you the list of sites that we consider to be in excellent condition today.
Okay, so I look forward to getting that list. Also, can you tell us, you know, just going back through the funding that we have received, how much money have we received thus far from the William Penn Foundation? We all went to a great big old, you know, ceremony over at, in Council President Clark's office off of 22nd and Lehigh, I can't remember because that splits our districts, but...
Cecil B.
Cecil B. Moore. And so we went there, I guess it was almost two years ago now, and I believe there was the expectation by council that we were receiving $100 million from the William Penn Foundation. And I think at that point, you all had received about $5 million, and it sounds like you still have that same $5 million?
That's correct. So it's a $4.8 million startup grant, and the remainder of the grant is actually contingent on the issuance of bonds. So the idea is that the grant is a match in essence. It's an acknowledgement of the city's historic financial commitment. So once the beverage tax litigation is successfully resolved and bonds are issued, then those grant dollars are going to flow.
Okay. Can you also talk a little bit about the spend rate? So I know that, you know, you discussed it with the Council President, from January 18 to June of 2019, that the spend rate that you had originally anticipated was 66 million. Now I know that you said that you could, you now felt more comfortable that you could spend the entire amount of 147 or so?
I wouldn't say...
Is that what you're saying, or I just want to be clear?
So to be clear, it takes, it takes resources to spend quickly.
Sure.
So we would love to spend quickly. We would love for the beverage tax litigation to be resolved quickly, for bonds to be issued. So what we, but what we projected was our best guess as to how projects would proceed and the size of those projects, when they would proceed. It represented our best guess at the time.
Okay. But based on the expectation, I guess, of council, that, you know, we have all of these great project users who are, you know, up and ready to go, and the idea that, say, you know, just spending the 66 when we have 147 to be able to get some projects done, get projects started, everybody's, you know, has expectations and has been waiting for rebuild. And so the 147 million that we would have available, you are saying that you would now feel comfortable in being able to allocate those resources in the first round and be able to spend those dollars so that we can get these projects started?
I can't commit to being able to spend 147 million. For example, if the bonds are not issued until, until January of 2019, I don't think we could spend 100 million between January and June. We also want to acknowledge that, you know, design takes time. We've talked about really substantive community engagement. So I think it takes time to hear from neighborhood residents about their desires for their facilities to have designs done. We need council members to have a moment at the end of design to make sure that the designs are consistent with what neighborhood residents have been saying. We also want to make sure that there's time for small businesses with limited marketing capacity to compete for projects. So we just want to make sure that we're building in time for all of those important project parts to occur.
Okay, so how much time, let's say if the, if the bonds were issued in January of 2019, what would you say is an appropriate amount of time to be able to spend those dollars down? Would it be December, January to December of 2019? Would it be January 19 to December 20, to June 2020?
The original projection for bonds was to issue every, 100 million every two years.
Yeah.
So the assumption was really spending 50 million per year.
Okay.
And just to talk through one project, one hypothetical project, we think that design could take anywhere from two months to eight months for a really large facility that needs some really robust community engagement. Then, you know, we expect there to be a pause where district council members have the opportunity to make sure that the design is consistent with what the neighborhood has been saying. And then construction could be anywhere from, for a small project, three months to over a year for a large site. So we think there's a huge amount of variation in the duration of projects.
Okay. So if I'm understanding your answer correctly, I would say that from what you've given me, that it could be an up to, up to a two-year period that you would need to be able to effectively spend these dollars down?
100 million in bond proceeds, yes, up to two years.
Okay. Okay. All right, and, you know, I'll come back around. I think that, you know, I'm really hopeful that you'll have those questions on the diversity piece very quickly.
Absolutely.
So before we leave today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Parker, for staying focused on things she cares deeply about and not moving an inch on it, and I appreciate that tenacity. A couple, first of all, let me thank you. You did two outreach pieces for me, one for MedWeek when you came over and talked to dozens of minority and female firms about these opportunities way in advance, so I appreciate that. The second outreach you did was at Roxborough Memorial Hospital, and we had a packed house there, and we exchanged information both on the levels of employment and on contract opportunities, which I know was difficult because they were two different agendas. But thank you for coming out. Couple of quick questions. Have you engaged, to what degree have you involved the CAP program, which is a group of retired contractors, a couple of them from Local 98 that have been training young people in the skills? Have you engaged them at all?
Yes.
Can you elaborate?
Yeah, not just CAP, but there are a number of programs across the city.
Name them, on the record.
Yeah. So CAP, Youth Build, JEVs.
Oh, I see.
Oh, I see. Those are the four I want to go on the record with.
So those provide a potential pipeline?
Yes, absolutely.
For people to be involved in some of these contractors? And are they going into a contractor's pool so that when companies, project users decide that they want to increase their participation, they know exactly where to go to?
So the actual structure of the program, as I am envisioning it, talks about them being part of the PHL Pipeline, and the work that they will do as apprentices while they're in the PHL Pipeline will be on rebuild projects. So yes, they have the opportunity to work in the discipline that they've been trained in, but on rebuild projects.
So if I recall the debate in these chambers, there was an opportunity for some local hires at RDA, but there were some others in the rec department. Can you articulate where those labor pools are?
In Parks and Rec. So there are three. So there is the PHL Pipeline, that's one pool. There's the Redevelopment Authority, there's another pool, and then it's the Parks and Recreation Department.
Roughly adding up to how many potential hires?
So our vision is, is that we can do 30 through the PHL Pipeline, that we can also do 30 through the Redevelopment Authority, and PR... So budgeted for 40 through the Redevelopment Authority, all right?
So some of those...
Sorry, to clarify, Parks and Rec budgeted positions would be 40 positions.
Pardon me?
Parks and Rec skilled trades would be 40 positions.
And so at least two of them lead to a union job, correct?
Correct.
All right, so, all right, I just, some things that need to be clarified and put out there. So out of the 66 million that you're talking about within this year, I believe the President talked about it from, it should have been January to next January, talking about the ability to expend 66 million, correct? On identified projects, correct?
Correct.
What is the job creation ratio for that 66 million?
I would have to...
If you don't have that...
I'll tell you why I don't.
Okay.
I'll tell you why. Because one of the things that dictates specifically for each is the type of projects that we're going to engage in, which I'm not sure we're there yet, having decided on them.
So you don't have to figure it out at that table, but can you please get that to the President so that all of us kind of know what the opportunity is? And finally, if you guys get this right, and the reason why my colleagues are so intensely moving on you, there's, this is 300 million, right? There is about a 10-year backlog in capital projects, what we're getting ready to talk about in the budget, which eclipses this 300 million, is that right? And then Council President Clark actually worked to, along with my colleague, Councilman Heenan, to identify 4.2 billion dollars worth of improvements needed for schools over within the school district. This model, if done correctly, if we, if we get the beta testing done and all the kinks worked out, can easily be exported into those three pools of opportunity. So we need you to get it right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I just want to clarify that some of the confusion around the spend models is, in your own documentation, on Table 3, Page 12, you list the usage of 66 million, but then on Page 15, you put 147.7 for fiscal year 18 to 19. And I think that creates a little confusion. What are we spending, 66 or the 147? So just, those two tables are not consistent. So, just, those two tables are not consistent. So, you may want to look at that because it talks about your projected revenues and expenditures. How many project users will you be engaging and at what point? And I want to get to the issue of the timeline because, based on your presentation, it's sort of like until the bonds go, nothing gets designed, no outreach gets done. So, what is the timeline? Because on the one hand, we want to get this out. So, what are you doing between now and the bond sale?
So.
Because to me, community engagement, design, why aren't we allocating the money on hand to create that pipeline so once the bond is done, then we're shovel-ready?
So, this document represents our proposal to you to move forward. We were seeking council approval so that we could ask project users to apply for grants to work on these 61 sites. So, the work that has been going on in the meantime has been developing a rulebook and plan for training for those project users. We've been keeping them updated, did an information session for them. We've been, we've been out trying to let minority and women-owned businesses know how the contract structure works, when the opportunities are going to be available.
But why can't we, we do this with our, with contractors all the time. We contracted contingent on money, right? So, we begin a process, and they all know that we don't trigger until the money is in place. My thing is, are we going to RFP out the 147 million contingent so that people can begin to develop that pipeline or not? Because that's not what you're putting here. And we, you know, one of the concerns with this is this timeline. Because it's sort of like, we're not going to activate until we do the bond deal. And to me, I think we have sufficient money to have things shoveled ready. So, explain that to me.
The agreement with a project user, so there will, once the project review team approves a grant, there will be a grant agreement.
But when are we RFPing so that project users can apply?
We would like to have those grant applications out as soon as you approve this document.
Okay. Because nowhere in there, it says on this particular, our goal is that by October 31st, we're going to have the first sites RFP and at least project users partnered with the sites. That doesn't, that's not here.
Our proposal is to move forward as soon as this project statement is approved, to announce a first set of sites for grant application, to have project users announce their intent to apply, to have them complete, to produce applications for the project review team to review and either approve and reject, and to have those projects begin as soon as possible.
Okay. So, once we approve this, when will we get a timeline about all of those time pieces? Or why aren't they ready now?
So, our challenge is that the projects, in this project statement, are all different sizes and scopes. The facilities themselves range from entire two-block areas with two major historic buildings to very small passive parks. And the range of conditions is all the way from, you know, just needing fencing and lighting all the way to major renovations or potentially reconstruction. So, the amount of money depends. We also have some projects that have been designed already. So, we would be able to go directly to construction, take a Rivera, for example. We, and then there are other projects that we need to begin with a major design and community engagement process with a community that has many diverse voices who all need to be heard. So, the amount of money to be committed is going to vary depending on the sequencing, which means.
Until we RFP and partner with project users, we're really not going to know the scope of that, right? Because we've all put numbers, right? I have my numbers, you guys have your numbers, Hill came up with another set of numbers. We won't know that until that initial assessment is done, right? Because we all know these projects don't happen in a one phase, they happen in multiple phases. My concern is that, at minimum, by June 2019, we should know all the projects that are going, of the 61, and have better numbers, right? Because the numbers are going to move substantially.
That's exactly right. So, we're very anxious to get started with those capital dollars so that, for example, we have design done, by the time we have bond proceeds, we're ready to go to fund construction with bonds.
None of that is here. So, that's missing, and it creates a sense of confusion. Because what I don't want people leaving today thinking, we approved this and stuff is going, because it's not, right? There's this whole, and I think we're missing all of those details in the middle about what happens between now with the money on hand and until the proceeds go, and what those timelines are. I want my project users engaged as soon as possible. They have capacity and are ready to trigger this, right? So, we want to get that moving. That said, what is your expectation of how many project users you're going to use in this 18-month span?
I couldn't say that, as you know, there are 21. We're not sure which project users will be interested in which projects, and some of them aren't just neighborhood-focused. So, I'm not sure.
Okay. How many projects you think you'll have, assuming everything goes right, how many projects do you think you'll have by June of 2019?
What I can say is, by the end of calendar year 2018, we intend to have started 10 to 12 projects.
By this June?
No, by the end of calendar year 2018.
Calendar year.
Calendar year 2018.
We operate on fiscal year, so that's.
Have started 10 to 12 projects. And we want to start slowly to make sure that we're giving grant, the project users time to engage diverse teams and that we're proceeding in a transparent way with maximum accountability. And then, in the following six months, depending on when the bond proceeds are issued, we would hope to launch, and I would say, as many as an additional 20, 25 projects.
We also did several workshops, and there is great expectation about our ability to really put forward minority participation, notwithstanding the ones tracked into the building trades. How many non-union firms with capacity have we identified in our outreach efforts that we think could get on the job soon and potentially lead into their own relationship with the union? But how many do we have?
So, one of the, some of the work that has been done by our consultant was to survey businesses that are interested in rebuild contract opportunities. And it was, of course, anonymous. We got 100, about 100 respondents from firms that are in the OEO registry and about another 100 respondents that are not certified at this time. And of those respondents, about two-thirds were non-signatory businesses.
Do we have any current non-union folks doing work in the city? Small community firms that have capacity to move over to this? People who might be doing Basic Systems? I mean, we have 67 certified folks at Basic Systems. How many of those folks have we surveyed? Because they have capacity, they're doing work for the city, they're paying prevailing wage. How many of those firms have we talked to?
I actually don't know that exact number, but we have been, we've been trying to take notes from that program and how, I think they're doing an excellent job of having a very diverse group of contractors. So, we've been talking with them. I would have to look back at our numbers to see how many contractors we've talked to are also on their list.
So, the consultant that you contracted to help you build capacity around the community folks, what work are they currently doing now? I mean, I would think that we would want to give our project users a list of, a universe of folks, some capacity, limited capacity, so.
That's exactly the work in progress. So, the work the consultant has done has been mining and data analysis on the OEO registry, and then also taking the information that we've gathered from businesses we've talked to in the districts and at our events. And then, and then we're in the, we're actually about to supplement that information using a call for interest. It will be posted and broadcast very broadly in the coming week or two. That is going to give us the material for a searchable database on our website for project users to use. So, it will be able to let them find, so I'm looking for an M or WBE drywall worker or plumber or electrician. They'll be able to find that. So, everybody who's interested is going to put some basic information to help facilitate.
And what's the timeline for that?
That call for interest is going to be out in the next week. And then, we'll expect to have that posted on our, that database live on our website
Shortly thereafter.
Shortly thereafter. And it will be constantly updated. So, nobody will ever be left out. You can get your information entered in that database anytime.
Councilwoman, can you come back?
I know. I'm gonna, I have to go, so I wanted to get in when I could. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Gray.
Thank you, Council President. I want to follow up with some of the points that Councilman Sanchez raised, as well as Councilman Jones, in reference to, looking at your testimony, you made a reference to, when we're talking about contracting opportunities for MWBEs, you used the phrase, "prepare them for contracting opportunities." What do you mean by that?
So, what we've heard from small businesses and what has been corroborated by the surveys is that some businesses feel that their growth has been hampered by access to capital, for example. And it's our understanding that that, in turn, is often limited by lack of sort of resources to put into back office processes. So, for example, making sure all accounting processes are done timely and properly, keeping up with certified payrolls, invoicing timely, projecting cash flow. So, those are services that we can help make sure, if a business isn't receiving that kind of technical assistance from a CDFI or other organization already in Philadelphia, those are services that we will be providing through our program to make sure that they can build up their credit score, get that access to capital, get access to bonding.
So, as you know, we talked about, and I introduced Rebuild to the Capital Consortium some time ago, and we also talked about using some of the funds from William Penn as a loan loss reserve for contractors going through rebuild. And here you talk about technical assistance and other type of things, initiatives. But what specifically are you doing as a body to talk with small contractors about, here are the type of projects that are available, and helping, and give them the tools so they can prepare for rebuild when it comes down the pike? As you know, from the conversations we've had going back to 2016, one of the things that I've been very critical is that, you know, you're having these meet and greet sessions, but you're not, you're really giving people the real tools on how to prepare for this type of work. So, if you're working on a rec center, say, like a, you name the rec center, and you know that rec center is going to have certain projects, either painting project or fencing or other type of projects, and you have contractors that have done some initiatives but not up to that level, what tools are you doing to prepare them, to give them the idea that this project is coming down the pike, is going to cost in this range? And so, that way, they can start to plan and prepare and find out they have a workforce available to help them do these projects?
So, part of that is just making sure that they have time to prepare. So, when we have been talking about timeline and, you know, our spending projections, we're building in a lot of time to let small businesses know that the contract opportunities are coming. So, part of it is just timely notification and communication. So, now that we know who the businesses are that are interested in the contract opportunities, we can be, we will be reaching out to them proactively. So, for example, every contract opportunity through every project user for rebuild will be posted in a single place. So, no business ever has to go looking at multiple project users, for example, to find the contract opportunities. They only need to look in one place. And we will be actually sending emails to every business on our mailing list every week with links to the new additions to the contract opportunities. So, notification is a big piece of that. Another piece of that is for us to be doing the kind of training with the businesses that we'll be doing with project users about understanding the kinds of projects that we have and what kind of capacity is needed to complete them.
I guess I'm somewhat concerned and frustrated that you've had this information and data regarding the type of projects that are needed on various recreation centers, but we're not getting information out while we're still waiting for the litigation to be resolved. I mean, to me, time is your most expensive commodity, and we're kind of wasting time and not getting specifically to those small business owners, which you've done the outreach to, to let them know these are the type of projects that are available so they have a better idea of how they can start to plan from a financial perspective in reference getting either better credit, getting access to credit, in reference to trying to identify additional workforce they may need. It seems like you have this information, but you're not getting it to them directly, and you're waiting for some time in the future, once the bonds get introduced, when you could be calling to small business owners now to say, "These are the type of projects we have," and give you some technical assistance and understanding of how to prepare for a project that may come down the pike 18 months from now. So, I don't understand, I mean, we've had these conversations going back to 2016. Initially, I was very critical about how rebuild was not going out to contract and let them know about the opportunities. Now, you've gone out to the communities to talk about rebuild in the macro sense, but you're still not giving them more specific information about the type of projects that are available so that way they can prepare for those projects once the bonds get introduced and passed and those come to fruition 18 months from now.
There's such diversity of the projects, though, in this project statement. So, without, you know, so we had hoped to move more quickly without knowing when we would be able to announce grant applications for project users. It's hard in not knowing which projects are moving first. We aren't able to be highly specific with the services that.
You don't have to give the specific project. I mean, there is a range of types of projects, you know, there's going, just based on the assessment, I mean, administration is starting to rebuild, they did an asset map of all of the projects, all of the recreation centers throughout the city. So, they have an understanding of recreation center, A, need this type of work, recreation B, need that type of work. So, you have a macro sense of all type of projects. Based on that asset map that was done from the very beginning of administration, you have a general understanding that we're going to have X number of projects like this, Y number of projects like that. Using those examples, you can, when you have those conversations with small business owners, you can give them perspective that a lot of these projects are going to be this type of size. It may be between 25,000 to 75,000, or 75,000 to 85,000, and give them some perspective. But waiting until you have a specific project, okay, we're going to work on this rec center, it's going to be this amount, or this rec center is going to be that amount. To me, you're wasting time and not providing contractors the time they need to build capacity. Just by having a meet and greet, that's nice, but if you're not giving them the tools and information they need to prepare for those contracts, we're going to be in a situation we've been in several times before. Once the RFPs come out and the project users are out, they'll say, "Oh, I don't have enough time to ramp up this contract because I don't have the lending capacity, or I don't have the workforce." And we're going to be in the same situation we've been in on multiple projects over the years. That's why I don't understand why we're wasting this time until sometime in the future.
So, Councilman, maybe I could just give you a summary of what we have done in terms of our outreach to businesses. So, we have held more than 10 in total information sessions for small businesses, especially for minority and women-owned businesses. Those sessions, most of those sessions, and they were all across the city, were presentations by Rebuild, the Office of Economic Opportunity, and the Capital Consortium. The information that was provided in those sessions was a general overview of rebuild, but it also included the types of projects that we would be having. So, for example, we gave them a list of the types of trades that we would likely need generally for rebuild projects. We also let them know the range of projects, to your point, in terms of size. So, you know, a rebuild project could be anywhere from $50,000 on the low end all the way to 13 million, to let them know that there are a wide range of contracting opportunities. And the other goal of that, those sessions, were to connect them with the resources and potential technical assistance that they may want to start working on in advance of rebuild projects. So, for some of those, we had some CDFIs there, for example, PIDC, that were present and that they could connect with afterwards. The Office of Economic Opportunity was also there to talk about how to get certified and what that process is. And we actually also talked to them about a new program that we're hoping to pilot through rebuild, which would allow those minority and women-owned businesses who may not be certified to work on rebuild projects and actually count towards participation as long as they are going through the certification process for up to a year. And there would be a cap on the size of their contract for that. And then, we also had Jonathan Snyder from the Capital Consortium to talk about that work and make sure they understood where they could go if they do need assistance to get access to lending and capital. So, those are the types of things that we've been doing because, to your point, we do want to get those businesses ready. And our hope is that through that and the other outreach we've been doing through our consultant and the database that we've been building, is that those businesses will be ready to take advantage of contracting opportunities once we have projects available.
One last question. Are you doing anything of a matching perspective with project users as well as? as well as small business? Because some of these small businesses could start working with some of the project users on the projects that they have right now, developing a relationship and building capacity going forward.
Yeah, so, it is our plan, once we know when we are able to start projects, which we hope will be after this legislation is passed, to have an event to allow those businesses to, to meet project users and have a networking event of sorts, so that they can connect. The other thing that we'll be doing, as Nicole mentioned, is to put out this call for interest that would populate a database that project users could access, which will be populated by businesses who have expressed interest in Rebuild. And, and part of the information in that database will be whether they are minority or, or women-owned.
But I don't understand why wait. You already have entities that apply to become project users. Why can you not match them with other small businesses who demonstrate an interest, so they can start developing a relation now, maybe on projects that the project users are currently working on, that they can move forward until that point in the future?
Well, we're hoping to do that as soon as possible.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Can, can I recognize Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Council President. Hello, how you doing? How's everybody doing? I just want to go back just to the pathway to the union membership question, specifically around the role of the redevelopment authority. And so, can you clarify what that role would be? Two, the role of the union would be in terms of young people who do participate through Rebuild in that pathway to the union. And then, three, is there ongoing executive-level discussion with members of the building trade and Rebuild as a partnership, and moving forward? Kind of working together to help build that vision? So, that's the three-point question.
So, so three things. So, so first, I want to emphasize, again, two pathways to union membership through Rebuild. One is with the PRA, and that is envisioned for, for people who are experienced in construction. It's an opportunity-
I think that was mentioned early on when we first started this process.
Exactly. So, so they, they would get a job with the PRA, they would immediately have that union card. The other path is for people who don't necessarily have that kind of experience. So, so that could be opportunity youth, it could be CTE graduates, it could be returning citizens, and that's the PHL pipeline, where individuals will have paid-on-the-job training, while, and, and coaching, and supports while they prepare to take the apprentice exam. For, so, and that paid-on-the-job training would be for up to a year.
Who's the executive director of PHL training? Who would run that program?
So, so we will be, so it will really be under Sheila's oversight. She has been designing the program over the last many months, and then with day-to-day work by the Rebuild office.
And the last part of the question, who's a part of the executive team that's actually working? I know Richie is not, no longer with us, he's the labor guide. Who's taking that role, the working partnership with the building trades? How often are they meeting? And-
So, Sheila and I-
The strategic plan to do to marry the partnership between the two?
Right. So, so Jim Engler is really overseeing that relationship right now, and then Sheila and I have also been meeting no less frequently than monthly with Tony Wigglesworth in the design of the program.
And how much of the young people will be paid in both programs? Will these be union wages, union healthcare benefits for the redevelopment authority pathway, and, as well as the PHL training pathway?
So, the pay rate for individuals at the PRA will be their standard wages for, for their building trades employees. For PHL pipeline, we have to determine a pay rate that will approximate a first-year apprentice level. The exact hourly rate hasn't been determined yet, but I would expect it to be in the range of $16 to $17 an hour. And we would expect to subsidize that pay rate with Rebuild grant funds.
And the other part of the question is, when the young people are preparing for the test, is there a pre, is there a program that we have under PHL training that will prepare them to actually take the test? Okay, that's it for right now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Excuse me. PHL pipeline, what is that exactly?
So, PHL pipeline is the name-
Is this a new program?
This is the program that was proposed originally for Rebuild, because we always said we were hoping to bring, to create pathways for more minorities and women into the building trades.
What about all of the, in the earlier part of the conversation, we identified all of the existing entities that were training people, preparing people for apprenticeship programs. Is that out the window?
Absolutely not. They need to be partners-
So, why are we creating, why are we creating a new program?
What we are providing is paid on the, so we have the work. We have Rebuild projects-
Okay.
-for these people to work on. So, the, the people are already, lots of people in really great programs, learning skills.
Okay.
What we have is projects to put them to work on.
Right. So, I mean, what is, what is PHL? I'm, I'm just not-
So, it's our money subsidizing their pay, working on our projects.
So, it's just, it's, it's a way to get people paid, a paid apprenticeship? Is that what it is, or?
Correct.
It is, a paid apprenticeship. So, it's not an actual training program?
Pre-apprenticeship.
It's a program, this is a way of paying people, like, well, I guess, what's the thing, West Philly?
Penn Assist.
Penn Assist. So, this is similar to Penn Assist?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure, because this is new, this one is new to me. RDA. Hey, sir, how you doing? So, we just need to get some clarity on what the reality is. If you recall, in the early part of the debate about how we were gonna accelerate people's opportunity in the union, we thought that maybe having people go to the RDA, because we thought that the RDA, once you got hired there, there was some agreement that you would be put in the union. And I understand that may have been the deal back in the day, and we accepted that. And then we found out that that may not necessarily be the case. Then there was some issue about a temporary card, and if there is, in fact, a temporary card that gets issued, I want to know, is there agreement with the union for the temporary card? Or if there is not a temporary card, whatever, understanding, at the end of the day, is there an agreement with the unions? Because that's the only way it matters. I mean, all the conversation back and forth, and, yeah, as you know, this has been happening for as long as I've been in council, and that's been a long, long time. So, is there some agreement, some document between the building trades and the city of Philadelphia?
Sure, yeah. So, just to, to restate, what the, the plans are with the redevelopment authority. So, the idea would be that individuals who do have experience in a given trade, but are not a member of a union, could be hired by the redevelopment authority to work on Rebuild projects. While they are employed by the redevelopment authority, they would have a provisional union card and access to union benefits during that time. What we are working on right now is how long they would have to be employed by the redevelopment authority for them-
Hold on a second. So, is the first part of what you're saying agreed by the union? Is in agreement with the union for the provisional card?
Yes, yes, that's my understanding, yes.
Is that your understanding, Mr. Heller? I hate to put you on the spot, but, I mean-
Sure. Thanks for, thanks for the opportunity. Greg Heller, Executive Director of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority. So, my understanding is that the administration has been working with the, the unions on such an agreement. And just to clarify, this would be a different operation than the way that we've been hiring people to date, to work on capital projects for Department of Public Property and Parks and Rec, and other capital projects where we hire union tradespeople, and they work on those various jobs. This is gonna be a different pipeline that the administration has been working on and getting agreement with the union on.
So, we don't have a program. We're looking at putting together a program, and then we're looking at getting an agreement for a temporary issuance of a card, and then, then what?
So, so this is, so this is something that has not started yet, because we don't have projects, and we don't have bond proceeds? So, as soon as we have bond proceeds and-
Chair, I recommend, Councilman Johnson.
Just a point of information. So, because I'm going back to when we originally had hearings about Rebuild early on, and it was from my understanding, when we first rolled this out, that the pathway in the union membership would be a part of our overall strategy. And then I think my colleague, Councilman Green, says, when we talk about time is of the essence, we're like a year into this, like, and I remember Tony Wigglesworth being down here at that same table giving his testimony, but it's like we haven't made the progress. And, and I think the reason why they have to be at the table is because even if there's a pathway to a membership in the union, we don't want our young people to get into the union, and then because there wasn't an upfront agreement, then they're on the sideline. Because those things happen too. Because you're in the union, don't mean you're gonna get work. You're in a union and just come down and visit every day, and you just won't get work. And that's why it's so critically important-
Right.
-that they're part of this overall conversation, that everyone be upfront. And not to, not to, just to put it out there, and again, in terms of a point of information, the mayor, he'd been in the 36th Ward, he told all my committee people, this is a priority for him. This is a must for him. When we came down, he talked about things that we think are a priority in our district, and we talked about pathways for young people to participate in the union from Rebuild. He again said, "This is a priority of mine, and for y'all to be at the table right now," today saying, "Well, I mean, because we kind of went through the weeds and really just found out that there is no official agreement or document saying, 'Here's how we're gonna move forward,'" even if it's just preliminary being done with the optimistic hope that the sugar tax will pass.
So, it is my understanding that, or I believe that the, the provisions around the PRA and what we're discussing with this program is in the MOU that was agreed upon last spring, when the, the Rebuild financing legislation was passed. And the reason, Councilman, why the program hasn't launched yet is because we do not have beverage tax proceeds. And in order to hire these individuals, we need to have the funds to pay them.
Yeah, but you need to have a document that reflects that there's gonna be an agreement.
Right.
You can't tell us, "We'll give you the money, and then you'll work on the program."
Right, right.
If you get a document that says that we have an agreement with the union, similar to the EOPD, similar to the, what's the plan they had, that they got with the unions? No, no.
MOU?
The MOU that they got with the unions, the, the basic, no, the project labor agreement.
Oh.
You got the project labor agreement before we even introduced the legislation, right? Right? You didn't have any money, you didn't have any work. So, now you're telling me, well, until you get the money, until you get the work, you can't get an agreement to get people to be in the union. I don't understand that.
So, just to clarify, the agreement is in place? What we, what is not, what we do not have right now is-
Can we see the agreement?
So, the, the agreement is in the MOU that was-
The agreement between whom?
Between the unions and the, and the city. For, for the PRA portion?
Can we see that?
Sure. I believe that is an exhibit in the legislation that was passed in the spring, but we can definitely provide you with a copy of that.
It's not true.
Okay. Then, we, we can get you a copy of that document, though.
I want to see, I want to see a document between the union and the city on the redevelopment authorities hiring-
Okay.
-for those individuals get hired, and now you're saying temporary card, whatever kind of card.
Right.
All right. But you, I don't want to say how you could sit here and tell us that before you can conclude whatever, when you didn't do that, when you got the project labor agreement.
Well, we are, we are working on, so we have an agreement right now between the city and the trades for, once we have, once we have bond proceeds, that they will hi, the PRA will hire individuals, and those individuals will have a provisional union card as soon as they are hired. The piece that we are working on right now is whether, how long an individual would need to be an employee with-
You're on the record now, saying that you have that.
Yes, yes. What we're working on right now is how long somebody would need to be an employee of PRA before they would have a permanent union card.
Then you don't have an agreement.
That's, that's the last piece, that's the only piece of the agreement that is not established right now.
You don't have an agreement. Until you have an agreement that reflects the pathway to that person to get into trades, then you don't have an agreement. I mean, you can get hired over there, and they say, "Well, you know, we'll see you in a couple of years." I mean, you, you, I know you're relatively new to the administration, but you know the history of this whole issue. I mean, you know, so, you know, the whole trust but verify thing?
Understood.
Is to the max. So, I really need to feel comfortable about this, because we are out on a limb. Big time. Because some of us actually took this very difficult vote, because we did see a pathway to get people into family sustaining jobs in the building trades union, something that we've been unable to achieve here before.
Understood, and we will get you that document.
All right. Greg, you wanted to, you wanted to chime in, since you were the one responsible? Or you didn't want to? I mean, don't, don't feel pressured if you just-
No, just that we're, we're looking forward to, to moving forward with this program. The PRA has, the PRA has a strong track record of, of doing high-quality capital projects for the city and hiring a diverse workforce.
If you don't have a strong track record in construction, in participation, because the workforce that you have over there does not reflect the demographics of the city.
With, the, the workforce that we have currently in our construction shop is over 50% African-American.
Is that new?
Since I've been here-
But that wasn't the numbers that we get, we got earlier when we had this conversation. Because it was our understanding, to get to a point where it was gonna be 50%, you had to accelerate the hiring of minority individuals to get to a number.
Well, mind you, our, our in-house construction shop at this point is fairly small. We have 12 people on our staff at this point. It fluctuates between 12 and 20.
Six, okay.
But it is over 50% African-American, and has been so since I've been here for the last two years.
Okay. Counselwoman, you have a point of view?
It would be, it would be helpful to have the agreement, the current PRA agreement, and then the new agreement that David is stipulating, so that we can look at the differences between the two.
That's assuming that there's a written-
With the signatories, I, I think for the record, the, the signatories has to have the building trades on it. It's not an agreement between council and the administration, or an MOU. I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, I'm not sure there is a written agreement. Is there a written agreement from past practices with the redevelopment authority? Because I'm not, I'm, I was kind of told it wasn't really-
What, what kind of agreement?
A written agreement with respect to the unions, because I understood it before. This is what I'm being told. You got hired by the redevelopment authority. Either you got into the union immediately, or they hired people that were in the union. And I'm, I'm just hearing all kinds of different scenarios. So, what is your understanding?
Do you mean for our current projects, or for Rebuild?
From the old agreement, in terms of hiring. Because I know we hadn't hired anybody over there for a while. I understand that.
Well-
And if you don't know, that's fine.
No, I mean, we, for the current projects that we do for public property and parks and rec, everybody who we hire is in the, in their various trade unions.
Yeah, I know that. I'm talking about, at one point, the redevelopment authority had a robust construction team on staff, all right? And I guess the question is, what agreement was, what the agreement was with the building trades at that particular time, when it was a real staff, significant number of people?
Like decades ago. Yeah, that, that was before my time, honestly.
Yeah, I understand. That's what I'm saying. If you don't know, I understand that. Real quick, before, capital, in the document that we passed, was supposed to be 40 people hired for the enhanced special team, whatever we called it. And what's the status of that? And is there still an understanding in terms of the participation of that program? Where they wouldn't necessarily be in the building trades, what they would be in the union, which would be 33, or maybe 47?
Good afternoon, Catherine Outlevel, Commissioner of Parks and Rec. So, of the 40 positions that we were given in last year's budget, we hired approximately 10 of those, and then we stopped hiring, understanding that the revenue was actually coming from the, the tax. So, we're in a holding pattern, and, you know, we still have those positions on hold, so that as soon as we can begin hiring for them again, we will.
And they would be civil service?
Correct, yeah. They'll be in the various skilled trades opportunities, so painters, plumbers, electricians, roofers, HVAC, et cetera. And we will be, have a dedicated capital squad to work on Rebuild projects, but also the other special capital projects using ITF dollars.
And will they be, they have to be in the union?
Yes, of course.
The building trades union to get hired?
They'll be, they'll be part of 33, correct.
No, I'm saying, do they have to be in a union prior to their hiring?
No.
So, this is traditional civil service process?
Correct, yeah. And I should say that of the 40 positions, we're also looking at possibly 10, eight to 10 positions, that would be more entry-level, say, building maintenance mechanic positions, or maintenance helper positions, which would be an opportunity for a lower level skill set to come in, train under our skilled trades, you know, the other- level skill set to come in, train under our skilled trades, you know, the other, um, folks in the skilled trades and possibly move up into those positions. So we are looking to carve out an opportunity for folks that are not as skilled to receive some more on-the-job training as a pathway to move into, um, some of the other positions in the department.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Um, so we have a number of individuals here, uh, from the public that wanted to testify. And then we'll ask, is it okay if we bring them up and let them testify and ask the city people to stay around so they can go? Because I'm assuming the testimony would be relatively short. Is that all right? I don't know, I'm putting you all on the spot. You can't say no in front of the public. Now, they've been sitting here for quite a while and they're, they're, these folks are on payroll, so they gotta sit here. They, other folks, if that's okay. Uh, so we'll go through the public testimony, right, relatively quick, and then we'll come back to... Um, can we get, uh, Hassan Abdullah, um, Rick Ford, and Diane Scott? And why don't we bring up Antonio Hunter also, Mr. F. Myers? And just say, if you all can sit on the side, and then, um, Marion Johnson. Ms. Johnson, why don't you just come and sit up here?
Thank you. Thank you. You please proceed.
Good afternoon, President Clark, uh, the distinguished council members, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hassan Abdullah. I'm the treasurer of the Sister Clare Mohammed CDC, which is located in the West Philadelphia section. And I'm here with our president and CEO, Azeem Mohammed, um, and several of our members. We have a new administration and we have embarked on several ambitious programs that are designed to improve the lives of the community residents that we serve. We have a Boy Scouts troop and plans for a female complement. We have career, career training programs, financial literacy, wealth building programs. We have entrepreneurship programs, college preparatory programs, vocational training, and we're looking to do an apprenticeship program for the building trades. And that's the main reason that we're here today. Our CDC would like to be an institution that sponsors an apprenticeship program for the building trades. We have the desire and the will. We have a forty-three thousand square foot facility on a full city block that was built as a high school. We have the instructors. We have a group of contractors and tradesmen who are ready, willing, and able to hire the apprentices that we, uh, can train. And what we need is the council's assistance and funding and setting up our program.
The Sister Clare Mohammed CDC supports the resolution approving the rebuild project...
Just state your name on the record.
I'm sorry, Azeem, Azeem Mohammed, president and CEO of the Sister Clare Mohammed CDC.
Thank you.
Uh, the Sister Clare Mohammed CDC supports the resolution approving the rebuild project. However, whereas the rebuild is targeted primarily towards building community infrastructure, neighborhood parks, recreation centers, and libraries, we call upon our distinguished council members to place a higher emphasis on building human infrastructure, not just promoting diversity and inclusion in the design and construction of these projects. Greater support for an apprenticeship training in the building trades would allow more minorities and women to enter the building trades. The Sister Clare Mohammed School Building, which is located at forty-seven hundred Waluise Avenue and consists of forty-three thousand square feet, is available to develop a building trades apprenticeship program and pre-apprenticeship training program. The rebuild aims to serve as a model by helping people become apprenticeships and journey persons and find family sustaining employment in the construction industry. The rebuild office has stated in the legislation that they will provide support to job training providers to fund the creation of additional seats with those providers and support employment opportunities on rebuild projects. We at Sister Clare Mohammed stand available to joint venture and/or collaborate with businesses and, and educational institutions, the public workforce system, and other key community stakeholders to identify the resources needed to design the apprenticeship program and recruit apprentices. We welcome your input and support for this much-needed apprenticeship training campus at Sister Clare Mohammed School. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please, identify yourself and proceed.
Good afternoon, councilmen, uh, council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Antonio Hunter. I am, uh, a newly elected vice chair for Prax Board of Advisors. I am also the vice president at Myers Rec Center for the Advisory Council. Um, I just want to say thank you to everyone who put in a lot of time with this, with this agenda. Um, I just want to say that there is also a element that has not been spoken about today, which, um, I'm here to speak about. I also run the program. I'm the executive director for the New Day Foundation, which runs a program outside, inside of Myers. And I can tell you that there's an element around our rec centers that we need to address. And a lot of the community, the children in the community use our rec centers as a safe haven. This is important because it gives the volunteers the opportunity to bring more kids into their community, I mean, sorry, into the rec centers and to actually fund, fund their programs. So I just want to say thank you for your due diligence. Thank you for your attention to detail. I see the passion from the council members. I also see the, the passion from parking recs and also park alliances that we are going to get this done. I believe speaking, I believe speaking into the atmosphere, into the universe, I know that this is going to get done. So in advance, I'd just like to say thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hunter. Please, and, uh, why don't you both come up too, so we can keep moving. Ms. Johnson, you'd like to go next? I know you're new at this, but you have to identify yourself for the record and proceed. Please, whoever would like to go next, speak into the microphone and proceed.
Uh, good afternoon, council president, council members, and other members from the community assembled here this afternoon. I'm going to be brief, but I'm here, uh, my name is Marion Johnson, and I'm a, uh, I am a active, actively involved member at the Barre, Barre, uh, Recreation Center, uh, which is located at Ethan Duncan, and I've been actively involved along with other members who I recruited from the community years back, back in the eighties, and up at that recreation center. So I'm here today to state that although I wasn't happy about increase, increase in the tax, the cost of sodas, but because I am really, really looking forward to the rebuild, uh, as a result of this tax extra money we had to pay, I'm looking forward to great expectations to take place in the recreation center located at Ethan Duncan because it is in deplorable condition. I've been up at that center along with other members from the community and family members also, actively involved in that playground. And we've continually tried and worked very hard to keep those doors open. And in order to do that, we also had to apply many, many times our, our energies to make repairs, do the painting of the building, and just get things done that we should have automatically had done to our recreation center. And so therefore, I'm here today because I wanted to go on record, when I heard that there was going to be some discussion of this, uh, rebuild, uh, I came down today because I wanted, first of all, go on record saying that Councilwoman Cindy Bass is our council person. I know she's surprised to see me here today because, uh, the weather was so bad that some people have not been able to get out. But, um, I'm happy to be here and just to go on record saying that's a recreation center that since back in the, in the eighties is when they had repairs made to it. And we had a grand opening day celebration of that because we were, made promises that we were going to have all of the things that should be done to a recreation center take place. That has not been the case. And it hasn't been an easy job for us, the community residents, keeping those doors open and having things deep, clean, and safe at that playground. We have had to fight, and I use that word freely because we've continually had to stay in touch with Department of Rec and all of those other calls that we had to make to just get some repairs made, which were not necess, not really the ones that needed to be done. The center has ne, been in need of being torn down long ago. So I'll just get right to the point, uh, this, because it was not our total responsibility to paint and repair that center continually and fix things that were broken, and we didn't have the support that we should have had through the city source, we did not go lax in doing that. But I just want to say today that we're still there fighting and we have hope now through this rebuild. And we have Councilwoman Cindy Bass, who is our, our council person now, and we wrote a letter to her and the mayor. And because the condition was so deplorable, we requested that the mayor, uh, this be brought to the mayor's attention and that the councilwoman come up there and see the conditions that we were working through. And, and she did respond to us and she came up, she, she and the mayor had a tour at that center and had an opportunity to look at the holes in the walls, holes in the cements, holes in the building, lack of, of maintenance that we should have had, and just a ongoing problem. So I'll just go on record saying that it has existed in a deplorable condition, and I want the record to show that we, the neighbors, the community people, myself, my family members, we all became a team and kept those doors open and made it possible for the children to be able to have someplace to go and programs to participate, participate in at that center. And so I'm here today to say that the councilwoman did follow through with our call and our letter, and she was kind enough to listen at what we had to tell her and show her, she and the mayor, to see themselves. And they came up, did a tour and walked through, and then they realized what we were writing letters to them about, what we were gathering together and buying things that we shouldn't have had to do out of our own monies. Not that we didn't think the children were, deserved it, but we didn't want to stay in the building and just because we didn't own the building, or just like we were looking just for the city to take care of it, we didn't stand still. So we have allowed the children to have that recreation center available to them, and we have kept it as safe as we possibly could. I said all that to say this. I myself have been up there eighties since nineteen eighty-six. I brought a program just to hold up, but just to show the evidence that I'm not exaggerating the facts that I just stated today. This is an opening program in eighty-six, when Barrett had a, we had a celebration up there at that center in regards to having the center revived again. Well, that hasn't happened. And so now, what I want to go on record saying is, as a result of the councilwoman coming up, the mayor did a walk-through, they saw all of this deplorable stuff that we, we have been writing about, calling about. And so now, I'm here today to say thank you to Councilwoman Bass. I'm happy that the mayor came too. And I'm happy that council is doing what they're doing here now, talking about this rebuild, and hopefully it will become a reality. And it won't be years and years and years and ongoing, because the children need this service and help now.
Right.
As we speak. We know about promises. I'm not being disrespectful or argumentative in any way, but those of you know that sometimes things that are crucial stay on the book over and over and over again. So we don't want any more promises. We want, we want it to happen and be a reality. I want to say, I don't want to be redundant, but if I wore a hat, I'd say hats off to Councilwoman Bass today because she don't know I was going to be here. But she came to our rescue. And she, she brought the mayor, she let him see the holes and everything that I'm describing to you today. She took a tour with him and let him see that, and she herself made a record of it. So I came to say, on behalf of myself, other people from the community who have come up with us, say thank you to her.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter.
All right?
Appreciate it.
And that's what I think, because we don't, we don't say thank you enough. I'm not saying that everything is always a bed of roses, because I've been in political arena...
She got a lot of them today.
I've been down here, President, you know, for twenty-eight years. I just recently retired, and I'm a worker. I don't come down here for publicity. So I want to go on record that the councilwoman has lived up to her word. She's been up to our center. She has made a commitment to us, and I know it has to go through channels and everything, but at least she didn't lay back and not make a commitment. So she has made a commitment to us that she's going to do what she can, she's going to fight for us to get that center up in the condition it should be.
Okay.
And that's good enough for us. We are taking her word.
All right.
All right?
Thank you, Ms. Hunter.
So I'm sorry if I was redundant or long, but it's...
That's all right.
Uh, uh, I'm...
All right, we got, we got a couple other people.
I'm, I'm sorry if I may have been a long-winded, but just think, I got the program from nineteen eighty-six, when Councilman John White was our president. Here's the program. I wanted to have the evidence and not just bring lip service down here.
Okay.
So I'm gonna take my seat, because I know other people...
We're gonna make a copy of that, so we can have...
Other people, yeah, I'm gonna give you a copy, President.
All right, let me go get some, get somebody to make a copy.
And I'm gonna take my seat. I thank you all for allowing me to, to come and have the opportunity to say a word.
We appreciate you coming down.
And I do really appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
And, uh, I hope Councilwoman Bass realizes that we really do appreciate every effort that she's making. I'm just here as one, but we have many others that feel the same way.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. I don't know, see me?
Mr. Ford?
Yeah, for the record, um, my name is Derek Ford. Some folks know me by Rick Ford. Um, I wear two hats in here today. I would say three hats, to be honest. The first hat that I wear is I'm the co-chair for the Commission on Parks and Recs for the Department of Recreation. I'm honored to be on that commission. Also, I am the president of the Advisory Council at Mandarin Playground located at Thirty-Third Diamond. Um, and I want to be clear about Mandarin Recreation Center as the president there. Mandarin Recreation Center is located at Thirty-Third Diamond, and it is definitely the gateway to the wonderful workings of Fairmont Park. I think it's equally important that we be clear about prioritizing what's going to happen in with rebuild in terms of different rec centers, but Mandarin Recreation Center, again, I reiterate, is the gateway to Fairmont Park. In addition to that, we have the, the Discovery Center and the host of other things that are happening near at East Park. Um, I was really enthused by listening to the ladies' testimony, and I think it's, folks really need to take more of a critical look at decision-making of what we do with rebuild. I think it's important, as we sit here this moment, moving into the spring, the city definitely needs to take a deeper look at how we govern, politics, and money. Um, my, I, I often share with people, it takes a village to raise a child, but what about if the village is sick? We got a lot of work to do in the city as we move to the spring and summer seasons and parks and recs. And, and believe me, we are desperately looking to improve the quality of life in all the communities around the city of Philadelphia. I'm honored to be working along with our commissioner, but I really speak for the, those, not only the youth, but the elderly as well in these recreation centers around the city of Philadelphia. So, um, you know, it's been a long day for me. I'm in pain. I want to thank council representation here. Um, you guys know where my heart and my passion is, and it's really about wanting to improve the quality of life for the residents of the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. She'll recognize Councilman Jones.
I just want to thank, uh... Mandarin Recreation Center technically is in the fourth councilmatic district, but actually is taken care of by that man right there.
Yes.
Because it abuts his district in the park, so I represent the squirrels and the trees and the bees right there, but you represent the people that actually use it, and he takes good care of that park, and I thank him for that.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Ms. Scott, how are you?
Hello, President. How are you? My name is Diane Scott, and I'm the after-school coordinator there, Athletic Fourteen Hundred West, North Twenty-Sixth Street. I'm a member of the advisory council there. And I'm not too much on talking because I'm more so of a doer. I mean, you, you hear people talk so much. I, I prefer, uh, the old saying... I mean, you hear people talk so much, I prefer the old saying, "Do or sit down." Or the other words, what you would say is, "Put your money where your mouth is." But I would prefer to do. As far as Athletic is concerned, as being a worker there, a volunteer there, because from 3 to 6, I'm on the clock with my kids. From 6 to 9, every day, I am there, you come in that door, I am there. When it comes to those children, I am there. If they don't see me, they're thinking there's something wrong. But I can say that Athletic have been a little upgraded in the last couple of years. But we still need that icing on the cake, because there's still things that need to be done, far as maybe we can get some programs in there that can help the older ones to come in and show the younger ones how to build things. Some of them like the music, some might like to do the drumming or drill team. We need that in our neighborhood in order for our kids to understand that they do have a place to go, do have a place to learn, and being there with protection, because there's so much going on with the killing. Athletic is a safe haven for them there, and I mean a safe haven, because there's so much that's going on around in that neighborhood, that they really need Athletic there in order to feel their safeness, to feel that they can be something, do something in life besides standing out there on the corners, running here, there. Some of them might not have a place where they can call a home, but they can call Athletic a home, because they see a face that they know that they can say, "Okay, I know I'm going to be all right, that I know that I'm all right." And with Athletic and all the staff members there, and all those that come and volunteer to do what they need to do in order to make it work, I'm all for it. But just, I want to thank Rebuild for considering Athletic on that list. I want to thank you so much, you just don't know how it feels to know that you do care, that there is a place in your heart in order to see that they do get that nourishment that they need in order to grow. Like I said, I'm not big on speech, and right now, I'm worried about getting back there to them, because I know they're looking for me, and I just hope and place in your heart and your mind, and when you pick up that pencil, the sign, that you will make it a dream come true for us all. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. That concludes the public's testimony. Can we ask Ms. the Rebuild team to come back up to the table? We have a couple of other, a couple of members that have questions. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Next Tuesday, I have my first budget briefing and town hall meeting in the 9th Councilmatic District as we begin this budget process, and I want to make sure that I'm communicating accurate information. So based on what we've heard from Parks and Recs, along with PRA, and along with the other sort of neighborhood-based, other alternative pre-apprenticeship program, we are talking about the creation of 100, potentially 110 opportunities. I want to make sure I'm giving out the accurate number.
That's correct.
That's 40, 10, we already have hired, but 40 with Parks and Recs, 30 with PRA, and 30 through the.
PHL Pipeline.
PHL Pipeline.
Per year.
Per year, right. And so that's 110, okay, 110 jobs. I want you to, I want you to, I want you to, for the record, because I heard it mentioned relative to the PRA, and most of what we know about the foundation of how we perceive this being structured, use the previous program. And I just want you to clarify this for the record, that our goal and our intent is to ensure that those 30 new hires that are coming through this opportunity will not be existing union members in any of the building trades, but this will be the opportunity for 30 new skilled, you know, Philadelphia residents, you know, to get access to these opportunities.
That is exactly correct. So 30 people who do not, who are not members of the building trades, getting new jobs with PRA. And just to clarify the math, so we're 30 at PRA, we're hoping 30 per year with PHL Pipeline, and 40 at Parks and Rec.
Right, so that would be 110, right? 30, 60, 90, and just 100?
A hundred.
Just 100?
A hundred.
So I didn't hear 30 to 40 with?
No, no.
Just 40? Okay, so 100 total?
Correct.
Okay. I want you to go to your testimony where you begin to talk about the grant funds, and I want to make sure that I'm clear about this. The grant funds are the only source of funding for our diversity and engagement efforts. And so when we begin to talk about the immediate income, particularly for those 30 Philadelphians who will be coming through the pipeline, in essence, they will be paid apprentices on the job. That funding is coming through the grants?
That's correct. So it would be pre-apprentice, so these would be individuals who are preparing to take the apprentice test while they have on-the-job training, and we would anticipate using grant funds to subsidize their pay.
Okay. So this is, these are not funds that we could say that we are waiting for these funds, and they are contingent upon the passage of the lawsuit per se. This is, the grant funds are going to fund this portion of the diversity and inclusion.
Grant funds will fund this work. We do need to wait until we have a flow of projects to put people to work on, and we need the tax litigation to be resolved, that triggers the bond issuance, which in turns triggers the release of more grant funding from William Penn.
So clear about that, that obviously we need the work so that they can go to work and begin the training.
Exactly.
But I want to be clear about who's funding and going to paying for these 30 people to be going to work. That will come not from city funds, but from funds that we are getting via grant.
That is exactly right. We can't do that work without grant funding.
Okay. Let me just note for the record that I am, and if I appear to be, you know, wanting to get this very clear so that there is no room for error here, it is because many of us throughout this process have gone throughout the community, and we've had to hear that line over and over again about work being done in the city, who's not participating in that work, and we view this opportunity not just for rebuild, but for private sector work, private sector work. So I heard Councilman Jones mention early, you know, almost $5 billion of work with the school district of Philadelphia, but I'm hoping home repair work in our neighborhoods that need to be done, if this constituency can get access to this opportunity. And so while I know we're going to be moving forward, and we do need to ensure that we're going to leverage the grant funds that are on the table, because I want nothing and no one to have an excuse that they can use about not contributing to that pot so that we can fund that structure and that program, I do want to make clear that we should not pass this on final passage until the city of Philadelphia and the PRA have come together with the building trades to hammer out a compromise in writing. Because once we are able to do this, this is going to be cause for celebration for all of the stakeholders, and I believe particularly for the trades, because now when we talk about the path to union work and who's benefiting from union work, it will be people who come from all walks of life and the neighborhoods across the city. And I said it before, and I'll say it again, this will be the first time that we have institutionalized a process like this with, with a decision made by local government and all of the stakeholders being on the same page. So it's history-making to me, and we all need something to take back to our people to show that we all delivered on our promise. So we're partners with Mayor Kenny and that promise that Councilman Johnson talked about that the mayor made when he came to visit his community and said that this was priority, priority for us too. We're all partners in this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
I only wanted to make a short comment, and I've listened to you, I've listened to Councilwoman Parker, and we've been involved in this whole issue of labor and schools and unemployed people getting jobs, and the shame of it is that in a city our size, if we could get 50, we'd be doing something. We have so many unemployed people, and it shouldn't be this hard to try to get, and so many people who want to do projects, people who come to us to invest in your district, to invest in my district, people who spend millions and billions of dollars, it shouldn't be this hard to get people in our city to get jobs. And I applaud you, I applaud Councilwoman Parker, and my other colleagues who work so hard for this, Maria and Curtis, and so many of us who work so hard to do this, but I tell you, life has to change. We shouldn't have to feel like we're all but begging to employ people who live in the city, who pay the freight for us and everything else that we try to do, to try to get them employed. When we say, for example, in my district, I say 50% employment, you want to come here? Now the numbers are 50% from the neighborhoods, you want to come? And then you got to make sure that that number's happening, because there's always some reason why it's hard, why they couldn't get them, why the people weren't prepared, they weren't qualified, they couldn't pass the math test, it's just that we're just really, really tired of it. And in 2018, with all of us here, and with so much that we need, it's just got to stop. So we just recommit and pledge ourselves to making a difference to those who live and work and go to school in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I could not agree with my colleague more that this is so overdue. And the idea that diversity is something new or up and coming that is just now finally being supported on projects that are using city dollars or funds that have been obtained through a city project, is just long overdue. And so, you know, I feel like some of my colleagues who say that, you know, I believe it when I see it, because there's been a history of this. And I just want to go back to not that far ago, not that long ago, when we talked about making sure that there was a pipeline, making sure that there was an opportunity for folks to come in through PRA and have these opportunities. Now I know what you said, that, you know, it's something that's being worked on, and right now, you can come in and you would get a provisional card or a temporary card, and we're still ironing out the arrangement. But I think that in the mind of members of council, the belief was that this would be the same program as already exists at PRA. And so I'm wondering if someone can explain to me why that, why is this different? There was the understanding, or at least my belief, that for folks who came in through PRA and who would receive an opportunity to have union membership, that this was something that was already occurring through other programs, and that these folks would be filtered into these existing programs. And now we're being told that, no, there's a separate program for those who are coming in through rebuild. So do I have that wrong, or?
Let me just clarify. So the PRA, during my tenure and long before, has hired a union workforce to do capital projects for our own inventory and for the city of Philadelphia as its agent. So what we do today, we have an agreement with Department of Public Property, and we do work for DPP and Parks and Rec, where our forces go out, and we also subcontract work, but our own construction staff goes out and does work for the city, and those are all union employees. And as I stated earlier, at least during my tenure here, we've done very well at maintaining 50% minority on that workforce. For rebuild, what we're looking at is supplementing that workforce with a new program that these folks have been speaking about, where we're going to give the opportunity for people who are trained in certain trades but are not members of trade unions, to be able to be employed by PRA and be able to do so through this provisional union card. So we see this program as an opportunity for expanding the ability for us to hire people beyond those who are already in the trade unions, and give an opportunity for people who have skills but are not in the unions currently to have a pathway to employment at PRA.
Has PRA been included in the conversations with the administrations and with the building trades as this project program is being worked on?
We work very closely with the administration, and we have regular meetings with my colleagues who are at the table with me, and with other folks in the administration. And in fact, I want to, while we're here, I want to introduce everybody to Karanja Slaughter. Karanja, can you wave? Who's back here joining us, who is, he's been with us for two months now as our special projects coordinator, and he's going to be our main liaison for the rebuild program. So we have been working closely on this opportunity, and just like my colleagues up here, we're very anxious.
Because it sounds like, I'm sorry, not to cut you off, but it sounds like, you know, the administration or the rebuild team was saying one thing, you're saying something different.
I don't hear that inconsistency, Councilwoman.
Okay, all right. Okay. One other thing I wanted to ask, ask about in terms of how we were, you know, how as the rebuild team, not as much PRA, but as the rebuild team, how are we, how are we engaging folks right now beyond the attendance, the information sessions and the attendance that we've had there? And if you could give us some sort of an idea, because I know we have, you know, you said we have to wait, we have to wait, we have to wait, and people are anxious to get started, and we do have some funds, so I don't understand why we have to wait for everything. I think that the community outreach piece could and should go forward, and in some cases even on smaller projects, possibly the designs and other things that need to be done, the preliminary work that needs to be done on these projects. And so I'm curious to know, what else are we doing? You know, it seems like the rebuild, you know, the staffing budget is considerable, and what are we doing in terms of outreach? You know, do we have a full rebuild staff in place? Or are we also waiting until we get the funds that we need to be able to proceed?
So I'll answer the question about staffing. Right now, we're a staff of four. We have not wanted to staff up with the uncertainty about when projects would begin.
So we have a staff of four in total?
We have a staff of four. And just want to say too, that the approach for staffing is for us always to be a small staff, because rebuild is a temporary program, so we don't want to add to pension obligations and so on. So small staff, contracted out services, ultimately, we plan to be a staff of 11.
Go ahead.
So we are actually just beginning to staff up now. We are seeking, as you know, a replacement for Sheila as our deputy for diversity and inclusion, and we are, we have also a compliance manager position posted right now as well.
And what other services? And what other services has Rebuild contracted out in lieu of hiring staff?
So far, the only contracts we have in place is for supports for minority and women-owned businesses, and we had contracted services to review financial information for the request for qualifications for project users. Both of those contracts were 100% MBE.
And both of those contracts, so there are only two providers on, well, one provider on each of those two contracts?
On the business support contract, there are two subs. One is an MWBE and the other is an MBE.
Okay. And the financial review?
And the financial review was just the one contractor.
Just one, okay. Okay, thank you.
And can David speak to?
Certainly. Community engagement. So thank you for the question, Councilwoman. As soon as we are ready to start projects, that's when residents will start to become involved more, which is something we're very much looking forward to. One thing that-
It just seems like it's something that could happen now.
Well, we don't know which projects will start yet, so we wouldn't know which communities necessarily to reach out to for projects that will be starting. What we will be doing is once, once those projects-
I'm sorry, I think that information is available. I just think it's an excuse, I'm sorry, but I think, you know, that information is available. It's easy to find out, you know, in what order and what priorities district members are interested in projects going in their areas. That's not hard information.
Right. And for that, and because project users will be carrying out those projects, they'll be responsible for engagement, we cannot start work with project users until this legislation has been passed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Rose Brown.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Good afternoon. I don't have the benefit of the exchange prior to sitting here. I do want to thank Councilwoman Parker for asking the questions I highlighted on the testimony prior to my departure. I do need to ask fundamentally, what was your expectation of this hearing this afternoon?
We're hoping that the legislation gets voted out of this committee today, Councilwoman.
And you were hoping it get voted out of committee, knowing that there's still a gazillion questions raised a year ago that is still unanswered today? Starting with MBE, WBE participation based on facts and not words?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
Data.
So in the, what we have guaranteed today is that you will have written information about the commitment regarding PRA. So we will provide that as soon as possible and absolutely would not expect council to act final passage of this legislation before you have that information. For MWBE participation, our commitment is clear. The ordinance passed in June sets our participation goals. We are committed to achieving those goals from the very first Rebuild project, and we've been laying the groundwork to make sure that we accomplish that.
So commitment is relative, and we live and work in a world where you listen to what people say, but then you have to watch what they do. So commitment without hard numbers on who you've reached out to, who you've reached out to by councilmatic district, who you've reached out to by area of service, profession, trade, doesn't get us there.
We do have the 200 businesses that have responded to our surveys.
Do you have a list that you can email the staff now and ask them to send it over to us?
Absolutely.
We need to see hard information. To underscore Councilwoman Bass's point, community outreach is vital, and while the question remains unanswered as to which of these project areas will get the, will get the lucky number to get started, do you have a plan for how you intend to reach out to neighborhoods, and if you could speak to that?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for the question, Councilwoman. So for most projects which will be managed by project users, those project users will have to submit an application for each project they work on to receive a grant from the city to work on that. In that application, they will have to articulate their plans for engaging with that community, and will be looking for those plans to be very detailed and thorough and thoughtful in terms of who they plan on reaching out to and a real understanding of who is in that neighborhood. That grant application cannot be approved without the written signature of the district council person, so that district council person will have to review the plans for engagement before a project can proceed.
Okay. You answered my question. Where's the role of the district council person in that, in that equation? Okay, then, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
So we're going to get the list before the end of this hearing, right? The list of MBE, WBEs that you say are potentially in the pipeline for this effort?
My entire staff is here with your permission, Councilwoman. We'll email you that list this afternoon.
So my ask would be that we get the list before the end of this hearing?
Okay. Okay, may I be excused from the table to?
Whatever is appropriate per the president's instruction.
So, Councilwoman, we, there were a number of issues that came up that we didn't get, well, we didn't get what we needed to feel comfortable in this final stages. So the thought was, in particular, as a result, and I don't have it, somebody else may have it, the issue with respect to the PHL Pipeline Program, which is kind of new to me, maybe because I haven't been paying attention, but I just need clarity in writing exactly what that is, because I understand that it still will be able to access those organizations that we had referenced in the earlier version, a number of existing organizations for people to be able to potentially get paid on the job training. So I don't know if that money will be available for them. So if you could just give something on PHL Pipeline.
Certainly.
In writing, what it is and how it's going to work, how it works in conjunction with all of the other entities that already have programs, such as Youth Bill. I understand that 332 was going to reconstitute that and bring it back in another name, and all those different programs that were in the actual earlier document. The issue with respect to the RDA is still left, we don't have a conclusion on that. So you all need to get, and Councilwoman Parker just referenced, a document, a concluded document that references the agreement between the RDA and the city in terms of how people will actually get into the union. The capital program, city cap, the specials, the enhanced special capital program team, the commission indicated that you hired 10 people so far. If you can get us the demographics of those 10 people that got hired and indicate as we move forward, assuming the, we're successful in the litigation, there will be an additional 30 people, how you will reach the goals established in, which were like 45%, I think we put in? What did we put in our, 45% because it is going to be civil service workforce. Am I missing anything else? Councilwoman Light Sprink, did you want to, you still, you had more questions?
Yeah.
All right, just want to make sure that the things that need to happen, it's an understanding between us and your team in terms of what needs to be before the passage, final passes of this, this particular resolution and ordinance. Councilwoman?
I just had a quick question. So if this SOTA tax legislation does not pass through the Supreme Court, is there a Plan B?
Nope.
No, okay. I just wanted to, just wanted to make sure I asked that, so we knew if, was there another source of funding or plan or anything else that we were considering? Okay, so this is it?
This is it.
Okay, all right, just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Councilman Hina?
Thank you, Council President. Just a quick question, and, you know, I'm glad, thank you for, for being here, there were a lot of important questions that were asked, and I think some clarity is being shed on, you know, the PRA and, you know, a little different than the stimulus weatherization plan. I think that ran dry and gave false hope to people in communities because of a job as opposed to a career. Here, I think you're offering careers, which is what we're all about. So thank you for that. And my question is, in advance, so we want to pass this out of, out of committee, and there's some unanswered, there's some questions, I think, that this council and Council President has asked, and hopefully, you know, we'll have an answer real quick to them. How important is this project statement moving forward in the legal efforts for the Supreme Court?
I would actually like to defer to the Law Department on that, if there's somebody here who is-
Well, if nobody's here, would, let me, let me strike that and rephrase it as, would you in Rebuild, all right, who is an office of four, which is great, all right, because you don't want to be overburdened with a bunch of salaries and not have enough money? And that was one of the problems with the stimulus program. I just want to revisit history. But in the eyes of, of the public, you know, for appellate courts, I mean, it's always good, just like the industry is protesting, and they've sunk, you know, millions of dollars in anti, anti-city council in Philadelphia and its policy. How important is it for us to say and to submit, you know, that we have a project statement, we're ready to roll?
Right.
And this is going to affect, you know, equity across the entire city of Philadelphia?
Yeah, no, I think in terms of the, the public perception of the program and the tax, that the passage of this statement could be incredibly important. We already have two programs that are funded through the tax that have been able to get started, albeit on a limited basis because of the litigation. And with the passage of the statement, we are able to start Rebuild projects with capital funding to show that the city is serious about this program, serious about investing equitably in Philadelphia, which we know is incredibly important and why many individuals in this room made the difficult decision to support the tax.
It's important to 165,000 people I represent in my district, so thank you.
Brief delay, I don't want to call it recess because people leave and we're pretty tight on numbers, so it's a brief delay. We got to get the documents together.